To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please proceed. Give me a second, I'll speed you up. In compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, laws of 1975 of the state of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting and the South River Board of Education was provided in the following manner. On January 15th, 2025, the notice was delivered to the office of the South River Borough Clerk and posted at the Board of Education Administration Building. The notice was also faxed, mailed to the following newspapers, Home News Tribune and Star Leisure. The notice was also posted at the South River Borough Clerk's office. Roll call, Mr. Rose?
Mr. Bezzac.
Here.
Mr. Budset.
Here.
Mrs. Bush.
Mrs. Bush has been excused.
Mrs. Lael.
Here.
Mr. Nielsen.
Here.
Mr. Unwoodaway.
Here.
Mrs. Sodowsky.
Here.
Mrs. Young-Yao.
Here.
Mrs. Urbannick.
She's been excused.
Shiza Huzain.
Here.
Nice to see you. Very good. Minutes?
Minutes, we do have pre-meeting minutes, September 22nd, and the regular meeting minutes of September 25th.
Motion on the meeting of the minutes?
Move the meeting of the...
Mr. Bezzac, second. Sodowsky, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Use of facilities?
Use of facilities, we have number 906, number 909, number 911, number 927, number 941, number 942, and number 943.
Anybody have anything on the use of facilities? Motion for the use of facilities?
Motion to move the use of facilities.
Ms. Lael?
Second.
Second, Ms. Sodowsky, all in favor?
Aye.
Financial report, Ms. Lael?
Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby certifies that is in receipt of the financial report, which indicates that no major account has been over expended and that sufficient funds are available to meet the district's financial obligations for the remainder of the fiscal year. The Finance Committee recommends that the reports of the Board's Secretary and Treasurer of School monies for July 2025 be approved and ISO moved.
You're second.
Second.
Ms. Sodowsky, all in favor?
Aye.
Superintendent Schools, monthly report, Dr. Searcher.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Nielsen. I have several items today. I'll begin with a brief overview of my report, and then I'm going to turn it over to District Administration for several presentations. I do want to announce that our educational annex is open with two Head Start preschool classes and one of our own district preschool classes. We had a successful opening, and everybody is really enjoying the new space. So we're now open for about two weeks. And so far, it's been really great for the children and the teachers. We did receive our Q-SAC score report just this month, and we've scored well in the areas of fiscal management, where we received 100%. Governance, which is all of our policies, board meeting procedures, budgeting, also at 100%. Operations, which is all about data management, HIB incidents, student safety and health, at 100% as well. And personnel, which really speaks to teacher certification, evaluation, professional development. We scored a 100%. In the area of instruction and program, we scored at 100% when it comes to compliance with our curriculum. And then we did receive an overall score of 79.3, which is, which really speaks to a lot of different measures of student data that Dr. Trevesano is going to review today. I have a little bit of information here about registration and residency, reminding our community that we do have a residency office that's located over at the primary school in our modulators, but that we also have transition and support days to help families register for school. And those take place Tuesday and Thursdays from 5:30 to 7:30. And we have assistance in multiple languages as well. So if you need assistance with registration or any other school-related matter, please come to the transition and support nights. 21st Century is off to a really good start. We have 360 students enrolled in grades three to 12. This is over 150 more students than we had last year. So it's a really large program, and we still have a waitlist of about 77 students who are interested in attending. And we're going to do our best to continue to open spots as they become available. On this board meetings agenda, you have some motions related to additional staffing for 21st Century. And as we approve more staffing, we can approve and expand more programs and accept more children in. So thank you for taking action on those items today. And then also on tonight's agenda, which I just placed up, we have a report on determining our grades under the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights, which is going to be presented by Mr. Matt Crouch. There he is. I couldn't see him. He's tucked away over there. Mr. Crouch will turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, Board. So that's all. I apologize about that. Thank you very much for this opportunity to the Board as well as the public. Tonight, I'm going to go through the 24-25 self-assessment for determining our anti-bullying policies and grades. And I'm pleased with the numbers that we have to show you guys tonight. So what is this? A quick overview, we're required by the Commissioner of Education to show our efforts that we're making towards prohibiting bullying inside of the district. This assessment runs from July 1st, 2024, through June 30th, 2025. It has eight core elements that I'll be going over with you a little later on in this PowerPoint. And then it's done based on all the available documentation that we have amongst the volunteer team, et cetera. So first thing, what are we doing to try and strengthen our community climate and culture? Well, we're having our climate and culture specialists giving us monthly reports about the activities that they're doing. Also, the new change this year, they're in the classrooms teaching as well as working with all the students throughout the entire district. We have a positive postcard program, which is very, very well received. We have student advisory team, as well as we have in schools where we have multicultural celebrations that are going on throughout the, throughout the different buildings to celebrate different ethnicities and backgrounds. What else are we doing? Well, we have MTSS, which was originally our Masonic Model INRS program, but we have really moved more towards making it more comprehensive MTSS program that will help us focus on students who have needs and go help them get the services that they need. We have a student assistance counselor who's helping out with this matter, as well as PTO is looking at using tools of the mind, which is a wonderful SEL program. We have the ESS program as well as Rutgers Behavioral with us in the district. ESS, we have a full-time clinician who works here in the high school to work with students that are Tier Two and Tier Three. We also have a RCS program, Restorative Community Service, which is taking any student who has trouble, and instead of using punitive measures, using a positive reinforcement to get them reconnected with the community. And then Rutgers Behavioral also has a full-time clinician over at the middle school, which is split, we own the buildings as needed. We continue to offer services to the entire community through CareSalus. If you're unfamiliar with what CareSalus is, it gives anyone access to mental health care regardless of status of insurance, financial need, et cetera. So it's a really great resource for us to get people connected with the help that they need on a regular basis. We still have the therapy dogs coming into the schools, which is really cool. The kids get really excited. It's just nice to have the animals around with people. And then, as I said before, we were talking briefly about the climate and culture team, who are continuously working on different initiatives to try and help build culture and reduce instances of HIB. So what are we doing for prevention? We have a say-something trainings for all the students that has taken place, where we regularly hold grade-level assemblies, as well as whole-school read-alouts in the lower grades. We have, all of our teachers have been, our teachers have been receiving nurture part professional development, as well as parents are regularly being, receiving weekly newsletters with resources. And Effective School Solutions is also doing outreach with the community and individual families who need the services. So this is where we get to the fun part, the report itself. So there are eight different categories, and I know you can all read, but I'll just kind of quickly go through it. HIB programs, trainings, staff instruction and training programs for staff, curriculum and instruction for HIB-related information and skills, HIB personnel, school-level HIB incident reporting and procedures, HIB investigation procedures, as well as HIB reporting. If you get a zero, you're not doing a good job. If you get a three, you're exceeding what the state expects. Last year, we had all of our buildings above 70, which is excellent. The numbers are excellent, but we did see room for improvement in both the middle school as well as the elementary school. And we did see that growth this year. The numbers have gone up. Why? Because we implemented more programs. We looked more carefully at the rubric to ensure that we were meeting the standards. So I don't know if you've ever read the rubrics before, I can provide you what you would like, but it is extensive, and/or, and/or, and/or going down it. We wanted to make sure that we hit all of those. And that's how we were able to look at it and be able to increase our numbers and growth. Another thing that you'll see here is that we now have the ELC, or the Early Learning Center, attached to this. We did not have that last year, so this is our first year with them, but we're going to continue to help them grow and move forward and see where we can go from there. So I wanted to show you this because I think it's very useful. You can see that the high school stayed the same, the middle school went up substantially, the AS went up a decent amount, the preschool stayed the same, and then we have the numbers to work with, with the ELC. So what is this? All schools exceed the requiring, or requirements in all eight buildings of recording, all exceeding. There is accurate investigating and reporting procedures, effective programs offering, offered to students, and then we have ample opportunities to reflect on the programs that we're running and make further enhancements. My recommendations. We're going to increase data collection as well as data analysis so that we can make those changes that we needed, much like we did last year, to see the numbers grow on middle school and the elementary. We're going to coordinate more district-wide programs, and we're going to expand the support teams in the buildings as needed. As of right now, we're in a pretty good place, but if we see the need, we'll continue. And that's my report. Does anyone have any questions?
No, thank you, Mr. Crouch.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time this evening.
In a connection to some of what Mr. Crouch just shared, is one of your other agenda items for this evening, which is to approve two of our staff members for apparent training related to anti-bullying, HIB, and so on. That's on your agenda for tonight. Next, what I would like to do is point out that item 3.3 under the superintendent's report is to approve those NJQSAT scores. And then I'll turn it over to Dr. Trevesano, who will review item 3.4, which is our district data presentation.
Good evening. I promised Dr. Searcher I would keep the presentation to under 45 minutes, so just keep, no, I'm just kidding, not 45 minutes. Be a little challenging at this point. Anyway, this is part two of the NJ, the, part two of the data presentation. If you recall, we did the GPA as well as AP score results over the summer. So this will be the part two under the reporting that we are required to do for all standardized tests. This report will take into account three tests. One will be the NJSLA in the different content areas. The other one will be the access test, which is where we measure proficiency of our language learners. And then finally, we'll go over some results for the dynamic learning maps, which is more customized to some of our more specialized numbers. So I'll start off. All right, we always start off with a basic understanding of what the student learning assessments are. There are three categories, English, Language Arts, Math, and Science. Each one of them measures competencies in those different academic content areas. The science exam is a little bit more specific, where it's only given in grades five, eight, and 11. The Language Arts exam is given in grades three through nine, as well as our graduation performance assessment, that you already had that results. And the mathematics is also given, grades three through eight, as well as algebra and geometry for our ninth-grade students that are in geometry. All right, so I figured I'd start with a summary, a basic overview of where our current performance is for our students. We group them in students that are not meeting or partially meeting expectations, those approaching expectations, and those that are who are meeting and exceeding. Again, I wanted to give you the total number of students that were in each category, as well as the percentage of students per category. Now, once again, I always have this caveat, because there are people that actually will make a comment to me. They may or may not add up to 100% due to rounding. So if you do the math and it adds up to 99%, it's not because I made a mistake, it's solely because of the rounding error. Same thing if you get to 101%. So I just figured I'd give that as a small caveat. When reporting the data, I decided to do it as Language Arts and all the demographics, Math and the demographics, as well as Science and the demographics. And I believe you have a copy of the report available for you. There. All right, so the first slide does indicate all the South River reporting as compared to the state average, total number of students in the district, as well as the five different categories, the percent of students not meeting expectations through those who are exceeding expectations. There is a comparison to the state results as well, which you can, you can see that we disaggregated by grade level all the way down. Total tested in district does continue to fluctuate based on population, based on students in and out. The one thing with the Language Arts, students who are multilingual learners who are in country for less than one year do not test in Language Arts. So therefore, when we get to straight numbers, the number of students that test in Language Arts will be different than the number of students that test in Mathematics. I just wanted to point that out to you as well. The next three slides do break down the data by demographic areas such as race, and then program, and then gender. And I apologize for the very, very, very small font. I didn't do that intentionally. It's just because there's a lot of data. As we review this data, and again, this will be available on the website tomorrow morning, as soon as I get to work, I will post it. There are some areas that you'll notice that have populations that are less than 10, and then they are blanked out with "not applicable" because we do have to keep student priv, keep student records private as any numbers under 10 become identifiable potentially by students. So we do not report those specific instances. But this will break it out, elementary, your middle, and then your high school by race, and then by program. Program is your language learners, followed by free reduced lunch, 504s, special education, general education, and then we again put it together in all students by building. The next slide does indicate by gender, female, male, all students, again, broken down, and the percent tested in each of, in each of the grades. This again will be available because it's kind of small. Anyway, the next slide does indicate our performance in Mathematics. So our performance in Mathematics as a, as schools, the data was represented differently here in this reporting year as it was in prior years. If you remember my report in prior years, our middle school numbers were skewed because the Algebra I results, the students that take Algebra I in the middle school were combined with our high school numbers. This year, we were able to disaggregate the numbers and pull all of our middle school Algebra I students and separate them from our high school Algebra I students, giving a true picture of our middle school performance versus our high school performance in Mathematics. Again, the next three slides, as they were, this is your by grade band and comparison to the state in each of the five measuring categories, not meeting through exceeding expectations. The separation here between, excuse me, the Algebra I middle school and the Algebra I high school does allow us to delineate and again, like I said, identify performance of true middle school students versus the middle school students who take the high school Algebra I test. So we disaggregate data again by, first by race, and then we take a look at it by program, same programs as we did for Language Arts. And then finally, whoops, there we go, by gender as well. I just want to reiterate that your numbers that you'll see, the raw numbers in Mathematics will be different than the raw numbers that you see in Language Arts when you do a side-to-side comparison. The last test under NJSLA that I do, is a science exam. The science exam is measured in four categories versus five. The first two categories are below proficiency and near proficiency, and then there's proficient and advanced proficient. The one thing I do want to identify is with it, or point out to you specifically is that this test is given for science placement, for science achievement. At this point, the state has not used this as any kind of graduation requirement, but it's really more so identifying proficiency in the different sciences as the students move through, which is why I believe they do it by grade band versus by individual grade. As I did before, they are disaggregated by race, and then by program, and then again by, then again by gender. Now, more specifically, I wanted to get to the following slide, and the following slide is an annual comparison. I apologize for going back and forth. It must be the clicker thing or batteries. Anyway, I wanted to highlight a few things on this. This is your annual comparison, and I like to do the annual comparison because I feel that it does provide a picture of performance over time as compared from last year to this year. And a few things I'd like to point out here is, in Language Arts, our middle school did increase the percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations, receiving a four or five. While the high school did drop, and we have to acknowledge that, our middle school did in fact increase. And in Language Arts, in specific, grade seven, the percentage of students increased by seven, by over 7% overall. So our grade seven students performed better than they had prior, prior year. As we compare these numbers to the state, I have additional comparisons here. Grade five and grade seven improved results at a higher percentage than the state-reported results. So what that means is if you compare last year's state average for grade five and grade seven, while those scores increased a specific percent, our, our scores increased at a higher percent. So for argument's sake, the state score in grade seven Language Arts, their performance increased by 3.1% overall. We increased by 7.7%. So we are showing a better percentage of improvement. In Mathematics, same thing, I'll point out Mathematics over there, we have a significant difference in our high school population. You'll notice that. That does come because we then finally disaggregated our data and took our middle school Algebra I out. The high school exam does come, or the high school results do combine Geometry and Algebra I, where our Geometry students are going to be our accelerated students through middle school, now taking Geometry as freshmen. Grade students, grade six students improved by over 7% as compared to 2024 results. And in fact, our grade six mathematics improved at a higher percentage than the state. The state increased by 3.5%. Our grade six went up by 7.4% in terms of growth, which I think is something to be, to highlight. In addition, our high school Algebra I, while the growth compared to the state is still about 1.5%, our Algebra I high school scores across the state decreased by half a percent. So arguably, we're still 2% differential there. The Geometry scores across the state increased by 7%. We increased by 11.8% in terms of performance. So there are some things I wanted to highlight there. Our Science numbers, as we note, some of the Science numbers are not necessarily where we want them to be. However, if we compare the grade five, eight, and 11 students that took the exam in 2004 as compared to 2005, all five grades did increase, percentage increase in their, in their pass rate. So that's again, something that I think is something that we wanted to highlight. We move on to the Access for ELLs. Access for ELLs again is the exam that measures their proficiency in learning English. Whoop, there we go. Students tested on WEADA historically, we wanted to identify that. And you'll note, I think I made a point of this a few years ago, that following COVID, the number of students that we bring into the district that have a language other than English as a native language has increased. You'll note the increase continues, and in fact, we're comparable to last year. However, the demographics are actually, oh, I'm sorry, not the demographics, but the age of the students that are coming to us as language learners is significantly different than it has been in the past. You'll note that in the primary school in 2024, we had 96 students who were tested. Last year, we had 162 students. So that is a significant difference of students that were tested on the, on the WEADA access last year. If we look at the elementary school and, I'm sorry, the K-5 schools, not just elementary, but K-5, I gave three years of data. The data in black is our 2025 results. The data in blue is 24, and the data in red is 23, and that was provided for comparison. In examining the data, there's an increase in percentage of students in grade one through five listed in developing stage. Developing is level three. We also see an increase in percentage of students in grade three through five in the expanding percent. The expanding percent is what we typically refer to as four, 4.5, those students that are nearing the exit stage for the, for their, sorry, for the ESL program. At the high school and the middle school, we have, we did the same percentage, same comparison. Again, black, blue, and red does identify the three different years, and we did that so that way it's easy to compare. Things I want to highlight here is that students in grade seven through 12 were listed in the developing stage. There was an increase of students in the developing stage, and this becomes important because many of our students do come to us from other countries, and they're enter, in the entering or the emerging stage. So their language proficiency is not as high as, as qualified to exit ESL. In this case, our developing stage, and you'll notice in grade seven through 12, did increase, and there was an increase in the percentage of students in grades 11 and 12 listed as expanding. So again, these are students that are nearing exit, may have been in program for a few years and nearing exit for ESL. The dynamic learning maps, again, these are for students who have more significant learning disabilities, were cognitively impaired. They are assessed in emerging, approaching, at target, or advanced. Results are indicated here. What I do actually enjoy about these results is that our younger students, many of them, or any of the assessments that were taken by our younger students, they were at target or advanced. So that does really highlight our younger, our younger, our younger learning program. And finally, our high school graduation rate. As always, the class of 2025 graduation rate at the state is unavailable. I find it, I find it interesting that the graduation rate of 25 will be available in '26. But it's a reporting, it's a comparison. Again, typically, we do score somewhat above the state high school graduation rate. And last year, our number of graduates did decrease from 193 to 158. So conclusions and next steps. That's kind of where I wanted to highlight right now. A few very, very good and interesting things that we started to develop this year. At our K8 levels, we applied for a grant, a award and a grant to begin the position of a literacy coach. It's a very exciting opportunity for us that we are able to retain services of the literacy coach who will work with our teachers and refine instructional practices to help our students learn, learn in reading and writing in better case. Our academic support teams providing interventions. We've refocused effort and capacity in identifying Tier One interventions. And Tier One interventions are really working with students with their challenges in the classroom, well before we go and we try to put them into an intervention referral service or try to refer them to academic support, really trying to provide more and more support in the classroom with students before they move to a different area. We just purchased a new literacy series, and the new literacy series is actually more of an interdisciplinary literacy series, has a curriculum that was written for our K-5. What we can note is that some of our units arguably are narrative. So our third graders are doing literacy based in a science topic or a social studies topic. So it really is more of a blended curriculum. We really enjoy that. Teacher selected it after much review and implementation. We're now revise our INRS process for students in K-12. It's streamlined services, and it retains data, and it's instantly reviewable. And then finally, based on the new legislation, all students in K-3 will be screened for literacy three times, if I remember correctly, it's three times a year. for literacy, three times, if I remember correctly, it's three times a year, but it helps us to provide evidence-based intervention at a much, much earlier age. Any questions?
Questions, members? Thank you, Doctor. Have a good weekend.
Okay, and with that, I conclude my superintendent's report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Zercher. Motion on Dr. Zercher's report?
Motion to move the superintendent's report.
Mr. Bezzac first?
Second.
Ms. Young-Yao, second. Okay. We're going to go to reception of visitors, seeing that there's, oh, I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, please. Reception of visitors, seeing that no one's in the audience, we can skip over that for tonight, and we're going to go to the consent. Oh, you want to go to committee reports first?
Yeah.
Okay, committee reports first, Mr. Budzen, athletics.
Luckily, the girls' soccer team is doing well.
There they are, good for them. Under buildings and grounds, we have nothing to report tonight, you can see the report in Dr. Zercher's report. Finance, Ms. Lell.
Thank you. The agenda includes approval of the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget calendar, which is, it's upon us, and several contracts supporting academic and operational initiatives for the school year. Key items include agreements for district security cameras, the Alex math program, and literacy instruction, Think Circa. Additional contracts cover home instruction services, field trips to the Liberty Science Center, and chair rentals, chair rentals for graduation ceremonies, and financial actions such as tax requisition and line item transfers are also being approved. So I could read my statement? Okay. So the finance committee, after review of all items on this month's agenda, and upon recommendations of the superintendent, recommends approval of the items eight point one through eight point nine, with additional item eight point ten on the agenda as listed, including routine items. And that is all I have for finance.
Thank you. Would you continue with instruction, please?
Yes, okay. As Ms. Bush does, I would like to do some key highlights from Dr. T's report. So the high school is expanding its dual enrollment opportunities through partnerships with Middlesex College, the University of Delaware, and Kane University, enabling more students to earn the potential for college credits at reduced costs. The district also received an ESCNJ grant to fund tuition reimbursement for twenty-five staff members pursuing advanced certificates in high-need areas such as science, counseling, and literacy. And recent professional development sessions focused on AI integration in classrooms, early literacy screening for K through three students, and shared mathematics instructional philosophy, all supporting continuous improvement in teaching and learning. The agenda itself includes approvals for professional development, as well as field trips for students. Additionally, the district accepted two beautiful donations, a piano for the elementary middle school, and a contribution from the Verizon Foundation to support our high school Rambotics Club. And just as an aside, everything that, if you piece all the pieces together between the two presentations and the summary, it all makes sense that we're moving towards that literacy approach, and we're moving towards that improvement of the testing and the scores of the district, along with like our community and our teachers, like as a, as a unified vision. So that is all I have. So the statement, the instruction committee, after review of all the items on this month's agenda, and upon recommendation of the superintendent, recommends approval of the items nine point one through nine point five, with additional item nine point six on the agenda as listed, including routine items. That.
Thank you. Under negotiations, we have nothing to report right now?
Nothing.
Very good. Policy and legislation, Mr. Umudaway.
There are no items on the agenda.
Thank you, sir. Safety and risk management, Mrs. Sadowski.
Just skip me one.
No, I'm sorry, dude. Oh, sorry, Mr. Bezzac, human resources.
Thank you, Mr. Nielsen. The Human Resources Committee, after review of all items on this month's agenda, and upon recommendation of the superintendent, recommends approval of items twelve point one through twelve point six, with additional items twelve point seven through twelve point ten on the agenda as listed, including routine items. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, safety and risk management, Mrs. Sadowski.
Thank you. The Safety and Risk Management Committee, after review of all items on this month's agenda, and upon recommendation of the superintendent, recommends approval of item thirteen point one, with no additional items on the agenda as listed, including routine items.
Thank you, Mrs. Sadowski. We'll now go to Mr. Rosa for the consent resolution.
The South River Board of Education, by means of a consent resolution, adopt various resolutions of a routine and non-controversial nature at one time, and whereas the below-listed resolutions are hereby adopted by the said Board of Education in whole, as in the same way individually acted upon, and those are the superintendent of schools, three point one to three point four, and the finance, eight point one through eight point ten, and the instruction, nine point one to nine point six, and the human resources, twelve point one to twelve point ten, the safety and risk management, thirteen point one, and the residency, sixteen point one.
Motion to move the consent resolution?
Motion to move the consent resolution.
Mr. Bezzac?
Second.
Mrs. Sadowski. Local or all in favor?
Do it this way.
You, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we will now return to committees, school board, that's me, me. We just had a brief discussion in closed session, so everybody's up to date on that. PTA liaison, Mrs. Sadowski.
Just a couple of items. At the ELC, primary PTAs, they are planning Queen Wars to start October twenty-second. I believe it's going on for a week. Fall frolic is coming up in early November. Elementary school PTA is planning a Halloween movie night on October twenty-fourth, and they are hosting a book fair at the end of October.
Thank you. Residency, Ms. Young-Yao, excuse me for passing over you there.
No, that's fine, thank you. The residency committee, after review of all items on this month's agenda, and upon recommendation of the superintendent, recommends approval of the item sixteen point one, with no additional items on this agenda as listed, including routine items. Thank you.
Thank you. South Republic Library Liaison, Mr. Budzen.
I decided to have me read to the therapy book at the regular book at three a.m. and the current treat this year is that we have to consider the library as a part of concerns. The arts craft is October twenty-first at six p.m. There's an arts and crafts fall November twelfth at three p.m. I think the meditation classes are developed therapy, and their annual book sales November third to November sixth, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Budzen. Anything under legislation, Mr. Budzen?
No.
Okay. Student Board Representative, Shiza Husein, anything tonight?
Um, I, is this working? The first topic that you guys were talking about, Twenty-Fourth Century, I just wanted to add that it really is a fantastic program you guys implemented, because I myself, I'm a student athlete, and I think the Twenty-Fourth Century program, I think it started either when I was a freshman and a sophomore, and because of that, like I also tried to be on top of all my classes and academics. So it gives me like a good amount of like extra thirty minutes to maybe an hour, just to kind of catch up on my work, and some of my teachers also, they also sit kind of in the corner, so I also get to ask them for further work, and this has helped a lot of my classmates as well. They also find that Twenty-Fourth Century is a great time for them to kind of relax and get their minds off of like a heavy school day, but it's also like a great alternative that can allow them to kind of do better with their grades and also kind of bond with their teachers. So I just, I love that program, and I just hope that we can continue to implement good initiatives like this that can help students kind of relax while also be on top of their work.
Thank you. It's great to hear that, you know, praise from the student body. Thank you very much for that. Again, Dr. Zercher's initiatives, you know, can only say so much. We keep moving forward on the board here, Mr. Crouch, everybody, you guys do great work, you know, comes right from the student's mouth, you guys are doing great work, and we really appreciate that. Anyone have any older, new business? Nothing. Attorneys report?
For executive session.
Okay. Payment of bills?
Me.
The finance committee recommends that all bills presented, having been certified by the School Business Administrator Board Secretary, be paid as listed and I so move.
Second.
Mrs. Sadowski. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Again, seeing no visitors in the audience tonight, we are going to move to executive session, closed session. Thank you, Mr. Crouch. Gentlemen?
Thank you, Dr. T.
Dr. T., oh, Dr. T., you're sitting over there in the corner.